Counsel, are we ready? And Mayor, we're ready? Okay. I would like to welcome everyone to tonight's Lebanon City Council meeting for August 25th, and I would ask that you would all please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. This evening, we ask that you guide our public officials to govern with integrity and justice that will benefit those who live and work in our city. We pray for our nation and the other nations of the world. We ask you to guide those in leadership positions, help them to make decisions that not only benefit just a few, but are best for the majority. We pray for the first responders and others who help those in need and protect our community. We also offer thanks to those members of our community who selflessly, while in tears, serve to make our city a better place to live, work, and play. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cheryl, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hados?
Here.
Mr. McGuire?
Here.
Mr. Morales?
Here.
Mr. Potash?
Here.
Chairman Martin?
Here. Counsel, you have all received the minutes for our July 28th, 2025 council meeting. At this time, do we have any corrections or deletions? Okay, hearing none, the minutes will stand. Next on our agenda, we have the budget report for January 1st through July 31st, 2025, and I will hand it off to the Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With more than 58% of our budget year completed, revenues are more than 70%, expenditures almost 49%. Therefore, we're performing better than budgeted in both categories.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from counsel for the Mayor regarding the budget? Okay. And from the press? And public? All right. Next on our agenda, we have two resolutions. The first resolution is authorizing the proper officials of the City of Lebanon to file a grant application under Pennsylvania Municipal Assistance Program for the preparation of a comprehensive plan for the City of Lebanon. And do I have a motion for this resolution?
Yes, I would like to make a motion for resolution number 28.
Thank you, Joe. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Sean. And Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the City of Lebanon's comprehensive plan is a long-range planning document that guides decisions about land use, infrastructure, housing, transportation, recreation, and economic development. And it serves as the foundation for zoning ordinances, capital improvement planning, and coordination with regional and county planning efforts. The city's current plan was last adopted in 2004, making it more than 20 years old, and it needs to be reviewed to determine if it's still reflective of the city's current needs, priorities, and growth patterns. An updated comprehensive plan is a critical tool to help the city make informed decisions, secure future grant funding, support private investment, and improve coordination with adjacent municipalities and the county. Lebanon County is currently in the process of updating its own comprehensive plan, and the city's plan update will follow, allowing us to align our local goals with the broader regional vision. To support this project, the city plans to apply for a municipal assistance program or MAP grant through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, and that would be after this meeting. The total project cost is $79,000. The MAP grant request is $39,500 because it's a 50-50 match. So, again, our local share would be $39,500, and we would budget the required matching funds out of the general fund budget for 2026. So, this evening, this resolution would approve applying for this grant, and also, just to note, designating this funding in the 2026 budget.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I know we had discussed this pretty thoroughly on Thursday, but at this time, does counsel have anything else that they would like to add or any further questions?
Just, just to, again, we did, we did talk about this on Thursday night, but Mayor, we've done this, but we've put in for this type of grant before. Did we, we talked about?
Um, we did not talk about applying for a MAP grant before, and I think this may be the first time since I'm Mayor. Yeah.
Okay.
But the county has applied for this grant, is that correct? Or am I confusing it with the other resolution?
Yeah.
They reformat a lot of these grants and changed the names, so we could have applied for it before.
And, and I think, Sean, I may be confusing it with the next resolution.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Which we have.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions from counsel?
After I've confused everyone. My apologies.
And from the, any questions from the press regarding this resolution? Okay. And anyone from the public? All right. Cheryl, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hados?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. Morales?
Yes.
Mr. Potash?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes, and that is five in favor that this resolution has been adopted. So, moving on to our second resolution, resolution number 29, authorizing the proper officials of the City of Lebanon to file an application with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a Main Street Matters Program grant for facade improvements in the Central Business District. Do I have a motion for this resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion for resolution number 29.
Thank you, George, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Karen. And Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the City of Lebanon is preparing to submit a grant application for $100,000 to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development under the Main Street Matters Program to fund a facade improvement program targeting the Central Business District. This program is designed to support property owners in making permanent, street-visible exterior improvements to commercial and mixed-use buildings. It builds upon recent public investments in streetscape improvements, pedestrian enhancements, and infrastructure upgrades downtown with the goal of further revitalization of the city's historic core. Eligible applicants include commercial and mixed-use property owners, business owners or tenants with the property owner's written permission. The property must be located within the Central Business District as defined in the city's zoning ordinance, and in general, I, I do have a map up here if anyone cares to view it, but it's, in general, it's not a perfect rectangle, but it's Willow Street to Chestnut Street to Fifth Street to 12th Street. In general. The program will offer 50-50 matching grants of up to $10,000 per property. This means a $10,000 grant would support a $20,000 total project. A $5,000 grant would support a $10,000 total project. Applicants are responsible for funding at least 50% of their total project cost. Only permanent exterior improvements that are visible from the public right away will be eligible. All projects will be reviewed by the city's Design Review Board in accordance with established design standards. Some examples of eligible improvements would be storefront restoration, window and door replacements, masonry and brickwork repair, painting or facade cleaning, exterior lighting, restoration of architectural features. The city had reached out to downtown business and/or property owners to inquire into their interest in this program. Five owners have submitted letters of interest so far, which would allocate about $60,000 of the $100,000 we're applying for. The total investment of just these five properties would total $129,000. Interested owners in the eligible area may submit a letter of interest to Janelle Groh by this Thursday, and her email address is jgroh@lebanonpa.org. Now, this is not a commitment. If you sign a letter of interest, it does not mean you must follow through with it. That would happen much later in the process. This is just something that DCE likes to see, that there is interest for this grant before they would potentially award it. I know some of the, we talked about this on Thursday, some of the types of projects that have been submitted in the five interested owners would be, there's a joint farrickscape, painting of a facade, reporning of mortar, additional lighting and painting, and replacement of window panes. And again, so far, these projects range from $10,000 to $36,000 so far. But again, the maximum is $10,000.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this resolution at this time?
We have applied for this grant before. It was, and also, the very last time, the Lebanon Foundation applied for a $50,000 facade improvement grant.
And how will selections be made, Mayor?
So, people will submit an application, and then the Design Review Board will, will score them based on, we have a matrix that we've used before, so I don't have it in front of me, but a lot will depend on having the most impact in the downtown and keeping with the architectural and historic nature of the downtown.
So, I think you answered this at the end of your, your spiel. The ma, what is the maximum amount that an individual or organization or such can apply for? Did you say $10,000?
The most, the highest grant award is $10,000, but the project would have to be $20,000 then.
Okay.
So, if they had a $36,000 project, the most they would get is $10,000. But if they had a $10,000 project, they could get $5,000. Or any range within all of that.
Perfect. Any other questions from counsel?
Yeah, actually, who, who sits on the Design Review Board?
So, it's a city council person, an artist, a representative from the Historical Society, a downtown business owner, and Janelle from a city staff person.
Any other questions? Okay. Any questions from the press? And from anyone in attendance regarding this resolution? Okay. Cheryl, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hados?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. Morales?
Yes.
Mr. Potash?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes, and that's five in favor. This resolution has been adopted. So, that brings us to the end of our formal agenda. At this time, I'm going to open up the podium for, we have some remarks, first by Kay Coyle, and also by Lori Funk. So, Kay, if you could come up and give your, of course, name and address for the record, and then just for reiteration, our, as you saw in the email that Cheryl sent out for anybody who wants to come up and say anything tonight, generally, we stick to about three minutes, and then we'll have any questions or discussion afterwards, so.
Sounds good.
But, thank you.
My name is Mary Coyle, and I live at 306 South Fourth Street in Lebanon, which is located one block south of the Good Samaritan Hospital. My neighbors and I, and these are all my neighbors who are residents of this block, and I want the city to enact a parking permit for this block of South Fourth Street. The city already has an ordinance. You made one in 2011 for transient students going to HAC, so it's already in place. Most of the homeowners here, two-thirds of us, have no off-street parking whatsoever for us, for ourselves, or any visitors we may expect, or any workers or anybody. So, about 25 years ago, the hospital created four lots that are south, but not adjacent to a hospital. They encourage their employees, their workers who come to work and new hires, to use these lots before using street parking. Unfortunately, these employees are not listening. Our streets are crammed from morning till night because these employees now work eight, 10, and 12-and-a-half-hour shifts. So, they're there all day long, and they know they can do this because there's no enforcement. The hospital can't enforce public street parking. That's why we need your help. I sent you all documents, which I hope you received and looked at, showing you the location of these lots, the distance to the hospital from these lots, and the number of spaces in each lot. On any given day, you could drive by, walk by, go by, and more than 50% of the spaces are empty. That means that's over 120 spaces that are empty on a daily basis. What was I going to say here? No, hang on. I lost my spot. It's my age, it's my age you're getting me. So, I was going to say so that no employee will be deprived of a parking space should you enact permit parking on this little block, nor should the hospital have any adverse effects to their operations for this, for this purpose. And I think that's all I have. Thank you. Any questions? I'm a little nervous.
No worries.
You did fantastic.
You're all my neighbors who came, we're all for it. What's that? Any questions?
I just wanted to say, I did appreciate the thoroughness of the research that you did put in this. We're taking it into consideration. Obviously, if there's an issue, we want to, we want to hear it and, and look at what our options are. So, I would, I wish that often when I have issues, that people would bring this much for me to review just on their own. So, thank you for doing that, that footwork. So, counsel, are there any questions at this time?
The only thing I would ask, how many spaces or, or homes are we talking about in this block?
Okay, so there's six homes on the west side of the street, on the east side of the street, and on the west side is the Brethren Church.
Okay.
So, when I moved here 43 years ago, the only people parking there, and it was zoned residential then, were the residents and people going to church on a Sunday morning. That was it. Now that the hospital's expanding, and I don't have nothing against expansion, I know this is progress, however, they have, they have plenty of parking, but they can't enforce it. And the employees are basically just saying, screw you.
If you have, yeah, if you do have, I would love if you come up, if you have any comments, if you come up and give your name and address, that would be awesome. So, okay. Okay. Well, I think that that's what we have. I mean, counsel, do you have any more questions at this point?
The only question I have, are similar streets affected the same way?
Um, no, we are two-way.
Right.
And Sixth Street is two-way. Since they made Park Avenue one-way, they have 50% of the spots during the day.
Right.
I got photos of all this stuff to show you if you don't believe me, but we're, we're two-way, parking on two sides, and two-way traffic. It's a lot of congestion.
Okay.
Yeah? Okay. Mayor, looks like you have something you want to say.
I do. So, I want to thank you for sharing your concerns, and I want to thank everyone for coming here this evening. I have been discussing this issue of the employee, the hospital employees parking, of course, in the surrounding neighborhoods rather than the hospital lots for several years. And while the hospital has been responsive, enforcement is only effective if it's constant. And realistically, we just can't do that. So, it's not being maintained at all times. So, I met with hospital leadership last week, and this topic was a part of our discussion as well as some other matters. But some of the key points is, they acknowledge, and I think that's huge, they're acknowledging that there's a problem, and they're supportive of enforcement efforts, including exploring a potential permit parking, which I think is huge. They wanted me to share with you guys that when the generator was built, the hospital expanded its lease at the church, and they are renting 42 spaces. However, many employees still avoid all those available lots like you brought up because they prefer not to walk, or they feel unsafe, or whatever their reason is. They used to have a shuttle. The shuttle was discontinued because it only served the church lot because no one was parking in the other lots, and the hospital was like, why are we paying for this shuttle when we're going one block if you even count it as a block? Because of the employees not using those other, those other lots. So, some of the things that have changed, in addition to the generator, and they did lease additional spaces, but for safety reasons, hospital entrances were reduced from 11 to 3 after the York Hospital shooting. So, that change may have altered the parking patterns because now employees are avoiding certain lots with limited access points into the hospital. So, they're thinking that that may have worsened the, the situation. We, of course, have been monitoring that area. We have been issuing tickets, but again, if it's not like a constant thing, it's, you're still going to see the, the impact from it. So, what is our next step? So, Pennsylvania law does not require that a traffic study be established prior to a residential parking permit program being implemented, but there still could be procedures and requirements that we have to follow depending on traffic impacts and things like that. So, we have to evaluate the impact on surrounding neighborhoods and consider logistics such as multiple vehicles per household. What do you do with visitor parking and things like that? So, it's not something that we can just say, yes, we want to give this to you. We have to do some work. We have to do some research. The HAC permit parking, just because you brought it up, was very straightforward. It was pretty simple compared to this situation, which is more complex because in that situation, there was no one parking on the north side of Willow Street between Seventh and Fifth, and there was no one parking on the east side of Seventh Street between Willow and the railroad tracks. So, we didn't impact anyone. It was during the day, Monday through Friday, no one was parking there. It was very easy to put up some signs and issue some. So, this is just a little bit more complex. Not saying that we're not going to do it, I just, there's some homework and research that we have to do. So, in the interim, what we're thinking of doing is, while we review our options, consider these, you know, the research that we need to do, hospital security has said that they will issue warnings to all of their employees who are parking too close to stop signs, crosswalks, anyone that's parking illegally. They, of course, because they're not Act 120 certified and Lebanon, working for LPD, they can't issue a ticket or fine anyone, but they were going to put notices on their employees' windshields to let them know, hey, just be aware you're parking illegally, and then they're going to call LPD. And LPD, if we're available, and when we're available, we will go out and issue parking tickets. So, that's what we're going to do in the short interim until we can do the research that we need to do and then be able to let you know what comes out of it. I looked into several different residential parking permit in sister cities like Lancaster and some other ones, and it's more involved than you think when you're talking about a residential neighborhood. And just today, because I was thinking, okay, well, this maybe won't be as complex as I'm initially thinking here because it's probably Fourth Street, maybe Park Avenue, maybe a couple blocks on Pershing, but I found out from one of my employees who lives in the neighborhood that she actually is impacted in a negative way on Second because, and I think this may not be because of the hospital, but because of the additional facilities that they've established on Berwin Park, and maybe Mr. Gates can talk about that, but the other facilities. So, those are all things that we need to look into and research and consider, so we do it correctly if we're going to do it.
Years ago, there used to be parking meters. There used to be parking meters on Hathaway Park, Walnut to Locust on Third, Walnut to Locust on Fourth. That, getting rid of those meters, just made the city streets employee parking lots and allowed them for visitors to come and go. You know, so that just really, it was supposed to increase the residential aspect of the neighborhood. It did the opposite. It filled the streets with employee parking there all day long, on Hathaway Park, which is 50% institutional and 50% residential right now. You even put up signs there for Dr. Dougherty's office, restricting parking to two hours so the people going to see the dentist have reasonable parking and access to his office. People respect those signs even though he's been gone there for five years now. They're still there. And those spaces are basically empty during the day.
Hmm. Okay. Those are all things that we'll look at as well. Do you know when the parking meters were? I'm sorry.
I was the new counsel 25 years ago when Jim Riley was the attorney and Jackie Parker was the mayor for the same problem. They just blew me off. So, it happened over 25 years ago when those meters were taken away. They wanted to give the neighborhood a residential feel.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to move on to... I'll open the floor if anybody else has any further comments at the end of this, but right now, we're going to move to Lori Funks. She's going to come up here and talk about the PIT program. Welcome, the floor is yours. If you give your name and address, as you know.
Right, Lori Funk, 609 Chestnut Street. And I'm here today with a hat on with the Lebanon Coalition to End Homelessness. I also have with me Mike Ritter, who's the chair of the coalition, and Shirley McGowan, who's an active, active member. We wanted to come and just alert city council as to the work that the coalition has been doing to sort of monitor what's going on with the situation of homelessness here in Lebanon, particularly in Lebanon City. Because, as you know, in the wintertime, when HUD has their mandated pit point-in-time count, we were based here last winter, and we were able to, despite the cold blue, the code blue alert that was issued, we were still able to find people who were unsheltered. We have been running a summer point-in-time count, just, and this is totally volunteer by the coalition, totally volunteer by various agencies and town and individuals, and that was held on August 6th. We found 14 people who were unsheltered that night. We were able to connect several of them to different programs, and I think that's part of the, part of the reason I wanted to speak to you because we all see people out there each and every day, particularly over on the corner at Willow and Seventh. And we were able to identify 14 people that particular night. And I just wanted to let you know that, that the Lebanon Rescue Mission, Lebanon County Christian Ministries, the Coalition to End Homelessness, DVI, and CAP are all working together to try to, to reach out to these folks and connect them to services. In addition, on that same night, 71 people were in various shelter programs at the agencies that are listed, CAP, DVI, LCCM, Rescue Mission, Agape, and even there was a person in addition at Wellspan in the Emergency Department. Yeah, basically, just wanted to, to give everybody a heads up that the coalition is doing a lot of work to identify folks and connect them to services. And particularly, this is important at the start of the school year. Last year, there were many kids who were identified throughout the county as being either doubled up, living in hotels, or unaccompanied. Lebanon City had the highest number across the county, and that was 389 kids who were dealing with, dealing with housing insecurity. The other school districts had, had numbers, numbers as well, and they continue to increase. Anvil Cleona, 35. Hornwall Lebanon, 143. Elko, 72. In Lebanon, 389. Northern Lebanon, 93. Palmyra, 82. So, I'm just bringing this to your attention just so that you all are aware that there are numerous families dealing with homelessness throughout their county.
Thank you, Lori. Are there any questions for Lori at this time from counsel? Or comments?
Just a huge thank you, Lori. You and everyone else that's taking part in this voluntary effort.
As you know, Joe, we have quite a team who's been working... As you know, Joe, we have quite a team who's been working on it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. Okay, at this time, I'm just going to open the floor up, if anyone, any city residents have any brief comments or questions at this time? So, regarding either of the statements or anything else, okay? And how about counsel? Do you have anything that you would like to share for the good of the city?
I'll share, since Laurie was just up there, I personally congratulated Laurie, but for those that don't know, Laurie was recently appointed by the governor as a representative of Lebanon County, and that's with the Advisory Commission on Women, so, Laurie, congratulations. I'm sure we will be well represented, there. Thank you.
For sure. Thank you, Joe. And anything else from counsel? All right, Mayor, do you have something you'd like to share?
I'll try to get through it. So, I wanted to talk briefly about our country's 250th birthday celebration that's coming up next year, and specifically on July 4th of next year. It's marking, of course, our 250th anniversary of the founding of the United States, and that is a milestone that honors both Pennsylvania's role in our country's history and the lasting impact of its people. So, America 250 PA was created by the state legislature, and it's leading this statewide effort to showcase the people, places, and businesses that make up Pennsylvania and make us proud. And here in Lebanon County, we have established an American, America 250 PA Lebanon County Committee, and it's a volunteer-driven group, and it was formed in early 2024, and its mission is to bring our community together to honor the Lebanon Valley's history and instill pride in our country, our state, and our county. So, what our celebration plans are, is on the 4th of July, we're going to host a one-day anniversary celebration at the Lebanon Valley Expo Center. We're going to have patriotic bands and music, historical displays and demonstrations from that era, food trucks, and for one year only, and I'm going to repeat this, for one year only, the city's fireworks will be displayed and moved to the Expo Center for an unforgettable night spectacular. So, again, one year only, and then it will go back to Coleman Memorial Park. To make the fireworks display bigger and brighter than ever though, we need to raise an additional $10,000. So, I'm asking if anyone is interested to please make any donations payable to the fireworks for the fourth fund, and you can mail them to the city clerk here at City Hall. We do have sponsorships where you'll be recognized in a program and in a banner, so, another thing that we're trying to arrange, we're working through the red tape, is transportation from the city to the Expo Center. So, we're exploring that. We want to make this celebration accessible for all people, so, we're going to work really hard on making that happen. But, just put a note on your calendars, July 4th, 2026, big celebration at the Expo Center for the whole county. Everyone's going to be involved, so, looking forward to that. And then the last item I have is, this is the time of year for West Nile virus, and we want to prevent mosquito bites, and some of the things that our residents can do is to wear insect repellent if you're going out at dusk or later. Stay inside, but, I think we're here to live, so, don't stay inside just to avoid a mosquito bite, but, wear protective clothes, and the most important thing, I think, is to remove standing water at home. So, if you have gutters that are filled with leaves, get those cleaned out. If you have a bird bath, make sure you clean it weekly. If you have a rain barrel, make sure that it's getting emptied if you're not using it, that you empty it and clean it out, because it doesn't take a long period of time for mosquito larvae to grow, hatch, you know, whatever. So, we're just asking you to empty any pockets of water on your property, and to wear insect repellent, wear protective clothes if you're going outside at night. So, because West Nile virus, we have tested positive, as well as some other municipalities in the county, and the County Conservation District administers that program, and they have done some mosquito spraying just last week, but again, it's just best to be preventative.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing that I did, in my open-top rain barrels, I put goldfish in, in my rain barrel, and they eat all the mosquito larvae.
Really?
And they have survived surprisingly well, so, it's kind of my, me and my oldest son, my four-year-old, our hobby, we go out and check on our goldfish, and they come up and visit with us, so.
That's a good idea.
With the, with the, the fourth, the 250th anniversary celebration, are there any recommendations for individuals for, other than, obviously, you asked for potential donations, any other ways that individuals can get involved with that celebration? I mean, I know for me personally, I'm probably going to put a few flag decorations out or such, I haven't settled on that yet, but, I wasn't sure if there's anything more.
Well, you can serve on the committee, I mean, we can always use volunteers, but, we have a fundraising committee, we have a historical committee, that's the one I'm There's at least five or six different committees to make sure that we have a nice celebration for the county.
Perfect, okay.
So, Bonnie Loy is the committee chair. So, if anyone's interested, they can call City Hall, and we'll hook you up with the right people, depending on what your interests are.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Any other questions on any of these items from counsel? Okay, and anyone in the press or public? Sure, come on up.
We're not proposing a parade, but, it's really difficult when you don't have a lot of volunteers, and you're trying to fundraise money and make things happen, so, it's really focused on at the Expo Center for right now, and having demonstrations of, we got, I'm finalizing the details, I think next week, there's a man that has a very rare musket that was commissioned by Benjamin Franklin, there were only 200 made, there's only six remaining ones, five are in museums, and one is in private ownership, and he's going to bring that, as well as some other artifacts. We're going to have a historian do something with trivia, we're going to have people dressed in costume from that time period. I've asked Lebanon Community Theater, they wanted to do some acting, kind of like how they do at the Ren Fair, and some other demonstrations, some games that are, remind you of games that were played back at that time period. We're trying to get a petting zoo with animals that were from that time period, again, the food trucks, but, a lot of it is going to be outside people coming in and doing these things, because again, the volunteers are just trying to raise the money and make sure an event happens. A parade is a really big deal. If you ask CLA, it's very costly and very time-consuming, and you need a lot of volunteers to make it happen, and unfortunately, we just don't have those volunteers. But, if the public wants to step up and help us, and you're really, really want a parade, then, if there's the volunteers and the money, then maybe it can happen. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I'd love to see it, but I know, yeah, that's always the, the issue, the, just getting volunteers out, but, okay.
I think that that's probably all, so, at this time, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned, and I thank you all for being here, and I will see you next month.